Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest. First up is, do you have any changes to the agenda? Does anybody have any changes they saw? Doesn't sound like it, we're moving along. Scheduled members of the public, there are none. Unscheduled, there are also none. Moving on to the minutes. First up is approving the minutes from the May 1st special meeting, which was the meeting where we discussed Mary Major, the bids for Salsas Sanchez Design Engineering. Does anybody have any changes to the special meeting minutes?
Is the road commissioner not the rob commissioner?
Alright, then I move that we approve the minutes from the May 1st special meeting as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Joseph? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 1st special meeting as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two extensions, I assume?
Yeah.
And next up is the minutes from the regular meeting. It was noted that, and it's already been fixed in the header, that it should say Wednesday, May 1st, not April 17th. Did anyone have any other changes on page one? I actually didn't notice any changes in the whole thing.
Oh, I only had one question. Where, on page one, where you're discussing approval of paving RFP, isn't it supposed to be two drac RFP apostrophe S all the way through that? Because it's plural? You're talking about more than one, or is that...
Well, because if the request... If the R is F P.
R is F P. Alright, then if there are no other changes, then I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 1st as amended. Do I have a second? Second by Gwen. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 1st regular meeting as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two extensions again.
I believe that may history. There's no errors. Or you just didn't spot.
I'll read again later.
It's too late. There's no going back now. Alright, storming along down to new business. First up is recycling costs. So Danny polled all of the costs that we've gotten between the Triple T who charges us for the hauling and Rowver Salvage, which is their company that does the processing. And all told through, and actually I added it in because there's a couple of things in the newest Pay Warren, through basically today for the fiscal year, were about $13,428, which is about $1,400 over what we had budgeted. Extrapolating that out, assuming things would be relatively constant for the last couple of months, it looks like that's probably, would put us somewhere around $14,006 or $14,008 maybe by the end of the fiscal year. So we're whatever, basically let's say between, we'll probably be $2,500 to $3,000 over budget for that. Practically speaking, I don't, I mean, I think we can probably absorb that with savings we've had elsewhere in the general fund. I don't, I don't think it's anything that we need to be particularly concerned about. And now that we, the voters voted for us to budget $18,000 for next year, I'd like to believe even with some increases that might happen in the commodities, we should still be, you know, if something massive doesn't change otherwise, we should hopefully be okay, comfortably okay next year.
We're not doing anything bad because they've kind of made their statement pretty well known at the town meeting that they wanted us to continue going at the end of the year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and we talked before about the idea of whatever if we, and I don't know, maybe a year from now we might feel differently about this, but short of pulling the bins and stopping the service for some amount of time, there's not a whole lot else we could really do to deal with it. And I don't think that would be a great solution for anything because we didn't know. Well, and we continue to have everybody depositing their stuff there. A lot of people probably, so we'd still, we'd still have to do something with what remained there. And like you say, I think it was pretty clear from everyone at town meeting that people like having that service, so we wouldn't, you know.
If we continue to go over budget, is that something that we should just bring up at town meeting again just to see if the townspeople continue to feel that way?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I guess, I don't know, maybe it wasn't as clear as it could have been at this past town meeting, but I think we did actually discuss the fact that with the rising costs, we were likely headed to being over budget this year. And then we built that in, which is why we're going, yeah. I mean, I guess if we, right, if we get to the point a year from now where we find we're potentially running over the 18 even, or even, honestly, even if it's getting close to it, given how much of an increase that would be now over what we had this year, but yeah.
Just discussing, I remember.
But it's, yeah, no, I think, I think you're...
Just out of curiosity, do you remember what we paid for recycling? What was it like, $7,000 or $8,000 when we were part of the district and so forth?
Well, it was, it wasn't, it was never, when the district still processed recycling, there was no separate cost for it.
No, but we paid the dues.
We paid, yeah, we paid dues that, you know, the last year that the facility was there, I think our dues were something like $8,000.
Right, and I guess my question is that even with this salotted $18,000, we still have $4,000 or $5,000 that we have to pay dues to.
Right.
So in reality...
Actually, we just got a quarter of it.
Right. So in reality, we're getting quite, you know, quite high if we approach that $18,000 mark. Because we'll have $18,000 plus $4,000 or $5,000 that we still pay dues for.
Right, although I guess I'd say that's the money we pay to the solid waste management district at this point has nothing to do with recycling. That has to do with all of the other...
Right, but when we were paying dues, that included recycling. Now the recycling has stopped, but we're still paying $5,000, $6,000 dues.
Right.
Okay, so that has to be part of our recycling costs for the town of Brookline?
It has to, it has to be, I think it's sensible to consider it as part of our waste management costs for the district. But I guess I would argue it's not, that is not a recycling cost. That's a cost for dealing with household hazardous waste, dealing with all the industry of things, the education and stuff like that. But yeah, I see your point. Okay, so that's kind of where things are at recycling wise.
Do any schools do that thing where they have the bucket where you can drop off your returnables so kids can return it for money?
Yes, at Newbrook?
Yeah, they have it right there. I mean, I guess the only thing we could also think about doing is, like down the road, is like trying to kind of educate the town on, if you're actually returning returnables or donating returnables, you're cutting down the amount you're putting in the container and you're cutting down in your taxes in the future. But like, if we all take the easiest route, which is, I mean, which I totally do it, I'm not even going to say like I'm really good about returnables. I hate going to the returnable center. Now, if I never had that, I might do mine separate, but anything that we can do to reduce the amount that we're putting in there will reduce taxes, like if we can just try to find a way to communicate with that work place.
Yeah, that's a very, that's a very good point.
Because people, they know it's going to affect no taxes. Most of the town centers, I think, will take that extra second, at least eight out of 10 times when they have that second thing, hmm, can I need, you know, should I start two bins? Or can I drop these off with the Newbrook school on my way to work? Or do I need to dump everything in there?
Has it been better? It looks like it's been better.
No, we're down to once a week. Once a week, and that's good. It seems to have stayed that way. But you know, it's subject to up and down and...
Spring cleaning is about to...
And it depends on who moves and who moves out and so forth. And the weather's been a determining factor, you know, that's part of it. It is what it is. I mean, at this point, it's a great idea. It's a great concept for the town, but there are some towns that like Westminster just gave up their recycling because of the costs and so forth. So there's, you know, slowly but surely escalating prices are creating some anxiety with people.
Maybe we could do, yeah, maybe we could speak to Newbrook and just say, if they want to like put a 55 pound drum there and have like a sign that says...
Oh, so you don't even have to bring it to the school?
Yeah, because I feel like that's happened to a lot of people. They're like, I'm not going to places for recycling. So maybe if one person from New, I mean, maybe it's something to consider. I'm sure it's not going to impact it too much, but it kind of raises awareness.
The only thing, the only thing concerns me about that is people are just so darn difficult that they're just going to put any can in there. They're not going to make sure they're five centers.
I don't know if people really do that to the kids though. Like I feel like the schools...
I hope not, but...
Yeah, it would be a little bit, yeah, right, exactly.
Well, but that would be their risk to take or not take because they'd be responsible for it. And then if they wanted to stop doing it because they were like, hey, your town is low E and they're putting all their tuna cans in there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that is a very good thought. I don't really even, I mean, I assume it's someone, I don't know who actually handles that at Newbrook, who deals with that stuff.
At one time, we were approached by someone that wanted to do that particular thing, leave a bin for charity for recyclables that were deposited. And I don't know where that went. That was, remember...
Well, yeah, so the guys who own the Putney Road Redemption Center, which is the place that Newbrook takes all of their cans and bottles and they have a setup at the Wind Solid Waste, they did contact us, but once we had discussions with them about what our volume was, they basically said they wouldn't be interested in. They would be happy to set up an account for us there if we wanted to gather recyclables, redeemables, and take them there and have it be a fundraiser for something. But we didn't have enough volume in the town to warrant them coming here and getting it, so yeah. But no, the idea of seeing, and again, if Newbrook or somebody wanted to either put something here or even just put up some signage or refer in people, reminding people that they could take redeemables to Newbrook wouldn't, probably wouldn't be a good idea.
Well, that could be put out on a blast. In the past, we've had people open up the recycle bin back when it was just tin.
Looking.
And they would clean out all the five centers. So if they were setting out near the road available, they're just going to...
Yeah, that's a nice thing too.
People, deserved people.
Which, which isn't necessarily that exactly, so you're...
I mean, if somebody probably is at a point where they need an extra can. I mean, it is probably someone who lives in either New Brookline or New Haven. So at that point, like...
If you're that bad, then go ahead and use it.
And it's a fair point that, I mean, it would just, it would just be something that would be offsetting costs that we're going to have otherwise. So in a way, whoever takes it would be okay, probably would still be better for us.
Yeah, but it's not getting in the big green bucket. That's less that's getting picked up.
It's less than worth paying, yeah. Okay, moving on to 6B SLP water system. So I guess probably, well, we do have a couple of copies of it effectively. And I don't know if everybody has read and/or absorbed the... This is about the deficiencies. So basically, we got a notice from the, from the state drinking water agency that we have a deficiency at the former Sunnyland daycare water system that A, we need to notify the tenants of the fact that there's this open deficiency. And then presumably, we have to either get them to understand that we shouldn't need to remedy this or remedy it so that we don't continue to have them responding back to...
I forgot my... Did you see my response? Yeah, I haven't really gotten into it with Doc. I tried to call Doc Dawson around to kind of clear it up. But this system's been working. We haven't had a cold form since '83, 2017 to part of this. So we're pushing two years.
This is not, this is not regarding...
This is regarding the install.
Yes.
And the thing's been installed.
Somehow, we have to find out from them how, what the step is after we notify Susie's that there is a deficiency noted. Then we have to go to the next step and see how do we take that deficiency off? Because we do have a system in order, but we don't know quite the step of where that's got to go. Who's going to verify? Because it's the state.
Yeah, you think, it's public drinking water.
Well, and unfortunately, you know, I, unfortunately, and I don't know how much, when we started down the road with that BEC engineering for them to design a new system, they did file with the state, essentially BEC. They filed with the state a preliminary notice that we were going to be filing essentially, that we were going to be submitting plans for a new system. The problem is, we then hold the plug on that. But the state, my assumption is based on this and the communication, the state still thinks essentially we owe them plans and implementation of a new system.
Right, they're in the first grade, we're up to eighth grade, grade eight.
So that's why Doc's response was she, it said it has to be looked at again. Because she doesn't know what else. So we have to first notify, that's what I understand. Dave explained it a little bit better.
Well, I mean, this is my assumption. I mean, I don't, I don't...
So we have to send a letter to Susie? And I think that given that the case, that I should explain it to her? Because she's going to read it and she's going to go, what the hell is going on? My work sucks?
Right, I think so too.
And Guy said maybe Nancy, is it? Maybe she can explain a little...
The bottom line is you have until July 1st to really comply with this. So until you really get a firm statement from Doc, I would just able, you know, and just...
Okay, we can revisit it, the 5th or the 19th.
Yeah, so let's try to, I had contacted Doc. Unfortunately, Doc can't be here on the 5th either.
We just got to get the information from her, she isn't here.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think she feels, I mean, she indicated this to me a couple of times. I think she thinks that we have all the information that she had as far as the communications that she had with the state at this point. What I'm not sure I have, though, I know I don't have, and I don't know whether we have somewhere else, is what was the actual requirement from the state that BEC then was going to be remedying? Because I assume that all of this traces back to whatever that was. And I just don't, I don't, I can't find...
Are we thinking that BEC missed the ball in here something?
No, I don't, I don't necessarily think that they did. Yeah, I mean, I think, not to defend them, but you know, at the time, we did approach them and did contract with them to design a new system. In the meantime, because of the problems we had with them and it didn't seem that they were doing anything, at a certain point, Scott stepped in. Scott Bovat stepped in and was able to get the current system that he...
Working, I remember.
Working, so then we pulled the plug on doing anything else. But I don't know whether...
So what we're saying, we have to table it until we find out how many steps we have to do to let them...
The original requirement.
To let the state know that we have a system in operation. How does it get approved that that it is working? We don't know the steps, so...
And is there something else we might have to do? Because there might be something else we legitimately have to do beyond having that on the system. Right, well, right, but this was always about having certain systems and potentially backwards to those systems. So Guy, do you have any sense of whether we would have, I mean, do you, does anybody remember whether we might have a file? Something about trying to have the original communications with BEC?
But I think Samara will have the BEC file because she had to pay them whatever. We had some sort of arrangement that we made and the contract she will have. So I would contact Samara and see what it is. And quite frankly, I think basically what you said is correct. When we disallowed BEC engineering to do any further work, Scott came in and put in a secondary system which met the standards. I think it's basically, it has to be inspectable.
Maybe, but it's not a secondary system. Well, it's not a school system.
Right, exactly.
Well, I never used, wrong choice of words from my book. It's a, it's a system that should satisfy the state for what they're looking for.
Now, if I can just stubble a hair, I tied off a little bit, but it's related to this. I've been watching the water system in there because I had a big discussion with Scott about it back when we found out that it wasn't hooked up right. And he called Trojan again, which is the company that has that system that's in there. And he found out it wasn't plugged correctly. So from that April time, the last spring when he had hooked it up, till fall, it wasn't even hooked up right, but we've been passing the cold form test. Hmm, that's a good name. Anyway, he had called up Trojan, got it, scraped it out last fall. He could see from the expenses we had to Scott. And then he and I, Scott and I, talked about how we were going to maintain it from here on in because those bulbs need to be replaced. They replace that once a year. They have to be cleaned every month or a while. And we were, Scott and I were trying to decide what kind of a maintenance thing we're going to do. Well, that was about the end of the year. And he had to come in and...
The alarm, the alarm went out a couple of days ago.
Right, oh, alarm. There's a thing on the system that that lights up and... One's up there, there's something not right. And he has to come in and clean it. Well, that was like January, it was the last time. And I never received a bill from him, praise God for that. And since then, the lights have not come on. But they haven't changed, wrong wordage. One on the right bank has changed to an amber color, a yellow color, different than the rest. It's been that way for a month. Simon called Scott to help him have oil over and clean it or anything. But every once in a while, every week to 10 days or two weeks, I go there, take a peek downstairs, see what it looks like. But of course, we get into a deep, into a fault situation where the alarm goes off and I'm going to get a phone call, or you're going to get a phone call. But I think the point I'm trying to make long winded here is that for five months, originally Scott and I were going to set up like an every three month maintenance setting. But I never called it because the system was fine. No sense of calling and cleaning or anything and do all this junk and nothing. An hour into five months, and it's still fine. So hopefully that's the case. And when you're done, David, with the other new business parts, I've got a couple of things I want to add about Susie's Little Peanuts. That's new business.
Okay, yeah, let's get through this other stuff first. So that's basically about the water system. So I'll reach out to Samara and see what she can find as far as the BEC stuff. And to Guy's point, we have until July 1st to at least just comply with giving them notice while we try to figure out what, if anything, we actually have to do.
Which probably makes a lot more sense to get the answers first before we start notifying Susie.
Yeah, because, right, see if we can get any answers anyway.
Well, and it's that prior to issuing the notice, you have to have at least your plan for corrective measures related to no telling, so we can't notify or anything.
So 6C, the EMP compliance changes for the Susie's Little Peanuts. So this started by Olivia possibly? Or maybe somebody else from the...
Right, it was Olivia who...
Asking for us to add Susie as a contact person, as administrative contact person for the EMP, the state EMP site, which is this, EMP thing is this enhance, or no? Essential Management Plan compliance, which is essentially lead paint. So it's the state's, for any pre-1978 building that you either rent residentially or rent or houses a childcare facility, you are required by the state to both go through training for how to maintain painted surfaces in the building and also file annual reports of your maintenance.
And when you're done, I can, I'll like this.
So to the best of my knowledge, searching on the site and other things, I find no indication that a filing has ever been done for that building by us or anyone else. And I think the reason that may be is because my belief is that before we took ownership of that building, the school district had an exhaustive inspection of it done and determined that there was no lead paint.
When the building was built...
Which would have exempted them from having to file a statement.
Right, got into a big discussion with Marcia Ollman in the back, who was pressured or on the saltwater during the time of the building of a $370,000 addition, which recently is a part of Susie's Little Peanuts. And she said, I don't know how I got into the discussion with her, but I said, I was working on the painting on the outside and I guess I had explained the conversation I had with Perkins that I was starting to spray paint. And they said, whoa, take it easy. Don't do that, you'll get fined because it's lead paint. You're in big trouble if somebody complains. Anyway, Marcia said, you ain't got a problem. Because back then, when they were building that building, evidently, which she told me, and it's easy to corroborate, all the schools, everything around this area was tested for lead paint. Of course, Brookline School being one of them. And we had no lead paint in the old building. And which is great. And how do you corroborate that? It's a really easy test. Mo Mommy, when I were talking about, he has a little test kit, about four bucks that you can get to can tell if you have any lead or paint.
Well, yeah, what I'll say is, I mean...
I know you have to, I have to comply with this again.
Well, we wouldn't and we shouldn't have to, but what I'll say is I don't think merely, I think what we ultimately need to do, if possible, is we need to find out, we need to find the records from the school district where they had this done. Because that's the kind of, that's the kind of process that the state...
But isn't this, she's just requesting to be...
Somebody just testing lead paint in the building would not suffice to get, to be exempted from this. We've presumed that we were exempted from it since we took ownership of the building, which is why I assume the town has never filed one of these statements before. As far as I'm aware.
We're not exempted from it if it has lead paint. We can't touch that paint. So from that standpoint, from that...
Well, and honestly, if we didn't know whether it had lead paint or not, we still have to follow all of this compliance. The only way we're not obligated to follow the compliance is if we've had an actual professionally done inspection that verified that there was no lead paint and the state gave an exemption. I'm assuming for the moment that that happened to that building prior to us taking ownership of it. But the search now will be whether we can find that...
They only had it six years. They didn't have it that long, three.
Well, but you were just saying that Marcia said there's...
No, 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 I'm sorry, maybe I explained that. I'm talking about when the addition was built. I'm talking about when the addition was built, when she was on the school board, when she was on the treasurer, the select board, the school board, when the building was being built, all the schools in this area were tested, and she said, our, our old building complied. We didn't have, we don't have lead paint in that.
So doesn't the school have a record of it somewhere?
Yeah, so we just need to contact the school board and see if we did it.
That find you that you found the upstairs?
I think my second, if you want.
Would you mind?
I talk to these schools a lot at work, so they're, they're gonna leave a call.
That's, that's about the building of the building.
Yeah, so I'll Because wasn't this just a request?
It's how it feels, all planning, it was like a pre-8.
Well, but the thought is that she does that and starts filing, starting to
Oh, no, go ahead, I'm talking with him, so his account.
If we put her on that and then she like files something, or like starts asking, then we might, people might ask why we have it. So it's probably good that we get the information.
Right, and so the whole thing is, is that we can't, uh, we can't put her as a contact on something because we have no, we've not established an account with the state for monitoring that. And in order to even do that, we would have to go, someone has to go through a training. We have to go through a process that we don't feel we need to go through because the building has been inspected and doesn't have lead paint. So it's kind of, yeah. Her question is, is easy to answer, which is, we don't have to put you on that because we don't have to comply with that. But it just brought up whether we actually have the documentation to back this up, which would be good.
Is she the only one that, that brought it up? That's how, that's how it came out, that she
Was Tina, was Tina the prior?
Yes, Tina was
Person, the contact?
There was no contact, we never did.
As far as the town is concerned, there was no contact.
Okay, I saw that it was.
Done something on her own.
Believe it, Tina did not know. And I'll tell you why Tina did not know. Because last year, when I was getting ready to scrape the hell out of that building, she made a comment about it. And, you know, I'm certified and staying, nah, 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 nah. And I was like, you're not telling me that I could be in violation, and that's how I found out from Perkins and all the rest. So I don't believe she even, she didn't even know that there was no, that it was not, that there was any report ever given, or there was ever any test was ever given for that building. Now, in relationship to what you're talking about, Olivia, I don't think she'll know either. I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna get any information on anybody, it's gonna be the WCSU.
There's gonna be a record somewhere, if I look through it.
Rot's a rot.
Yeah, but I think, I think we're gonna
Yes, I'm gonna
Yes, Shelby's gonna, Steve Jones is gonna contact them and see what she can
No, it's fine, I talk to supervisor name all the time for work, so I'm just gonna start looking at any that I have a phone call I have with them.
Sweet.
Like, hey, talk about another kid, also, by the way, did you find that paper yet? You know, it'll be good, you can figure it out.
Thank you for coming after that. But so, separate to that, Guy, I will respond back.
Yep. No, I'll just tell her it's in the works and the select board hasn't made a decision yet. If she calls me, but I'll
Well, I mean, I'll email her.
I'll steer, okay, I'll just steer it to you.
Clarify it. Um, I just wanted us to talk about it first before I did that, to make sure I wasn't missing some thing that I hadn't heard about. Um, okay, next up, six D is the road equipment purchase committee. So I know we've all kind of had different conversations about it, I think at different times, but coming out of the, of town meeting, I think there seemed to be a lot of interest from members of the community, um, some of whom have followed up after that, for us to form a committee to do some more research into what kind of equipment should the town possibly consider buying? Should the town consider buying any equipment? Wherever that might be. It's a given to me that if, you know, if we form this committee, that the road supervisor and the road commissioner should be on it. Who would be on it beyond, be on it's beyond that? That's not easy to say.
We know Archie's gonna
Uh, well, I mean, I think, I think Archie would be a very good person to be on it. He's bought a lot of similar equipment, he has a lot of experience with this.
But would there be a
Doug well then expressed some interest in potentially
Would there be a conflict of interest with Archie? Because Archie, we contract a lot of things out with Archie? Is there a conflict of interest there when?
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, Gwen, I, I understand your point, but I think, given the history and the, and the background of Archie and his knowledge, that he should definitely be on the committee, but keep in mind, he's one vote.
Well, I think the bottom line is that the committee would break, so it wouldn't have to be approved, so
Exactly, they're not
So there's no conflict, because they're not making decisions. There's bringing recommendations to us and them to make the decision, so
Well, it's, you know, I respect, it's just
No, it's a good thought, but I think that it's far enough removed from getting to make the call.
I get your point, man, but I, I think considering the bone of contention at town meeting, my opinion is, get all the negatives out. You've done a lot of work with this, go little for it.
The bottom line, in my opinion, is that to form another committee is, to me, it's gonna muddy the waters a little more. The more people get involved, the more, more questions are aroused and so forth. I think Mark knows what we need, I think I have an idea of what we need, and I think that the select board is in charge, or is in, is the person, the people who are responsible for purchasing things for our town. And I think the decision lies with the select board and the road commissioner and the road supervisor. The bottom line, we're not looking for cranes, we're not looking for anything. We're looking for one or two pieces of equipment. The equipment that we had looked at, the equipment that we had tried, the equipment that we had used for six weeks was the perfect fit for this town. I have spoke, I have not heard one person tell me anything different. Mark rode that equipment for six weeks, he can tell you about it. It does everything we need. We're paying $3,200 next June to have the grass cut again. That equipment can do it. That equipment is a backhoe, we need a backhoe. A town needs a backhoe and a dump truck, that's, that's all we need for our small town.
Guy, I agree a thousand percent. But that, 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 that doesn't take care of the negatives. Just one, I think rather than having a committee, or we could either have a special meeting, or just clear off the agenda and have, invite Archie and we all hammer it out. He has misgivings about it, I respect his opinions, I don't necessarily agree with his opinions, but we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, because it's a big expense, especially when, boy, I can testify to this, I'm always working on things, and you don't want to hear Mark's part.
There is no expense.
Well, there is an expense, and the expense is fixing it, the expense is trying to get parts for it, and if we can satisfy his concerns, then it comes down to whether we perceive it as a conflict of interest or not. But I think he has a right to, to say his opinion.
I didn't, I didn't necessarily
Hang on, hang on, Shelby wants to say something.
I was in school pretty regularly, yeah, I was an ex-graduate every day, so like it's just in my head, really. Yeah, it was good. Um, so my holy thought is, is that rather than getting into a conversation about this specific equipment or whether or not we all think it's a good idea, or where the decision, like obviously, the people in this room are making the end of decision, but I think that the people in the town expressed that they would be interested in, in sitting on a committee, taking time out of their day to research something and be invested in the process, in the town process, and things that affect their taxes. And the last thing I would wanna do is discourage that attitude, that they should show up and have an opinion and be invested in the process. We don't, we like, we don't like the people don't come to town meeting day, we don't like the people don't come to meetings, and the people are saying, hey, we want a committee because we want to take time out of our lives to discuss this issue, help problem solve, help think of ideas. And it's, it's an advisory, it's a committee, it is what it is. They can get together, have an opinion, come up with some thoughts, bring them to us, and then if it's something that doesn't work, it doesn't work. If it's something that's great, then that's awesome, but I don't think we should discourage that attitude. So I think that I would be a hundred percent for forming a committee if I want to.
You have a point, inasmuch as it was turned down by the town.
Yeah, the town turned it down, and the town said, but hey, we're not just against, we're not against the whole idea. We just don't like the way this happened, and we would like to have other chances.
I only remember one person saying they'd like to be on the committee, who else volunteered to be on?
Probably the other guy.
We just put it up
Doug mentioned being on it.
Okay, well, I don't know, I was just asking.
Yeah, I don't know.
Archie was, Stan Naga was interested in being in it, Tom Cabot was interested in being in it.
I mean, honestly, that's always
I mean, there were a number of people who
Hey, it's a big person, it's a big
It's a person, killing this.
There are other people might wanna come too.
Then we set out a notice and, and form
I'm not trying to be negative here, I'm just trying to give the sides of it.
Yeah.
Because again, the more people you get into it, the more warming it gets. So maybe the one of the suggestions was have a meeting and have people just, a one-day meeting, a meeting where anybody interested in the equipment
A Saturday morning or whatever you have.
I, Joseph, that's a point, and then I'd like to make a point after that.
I, I think that, I agree, the, the townspeople expressed a desire to form a committee. I agree that the road commissioner and the road supervisor should be on it, maybe one member from the select board, and then two people that are experienced and express, express the interest with the Archie and Doug. And then maybe all the committee needs to do is meet maybe one time, go over everything, and then we can warn a, a special meeting, and that could be a special select board meeting to, to specifically discuss and approve or not approve.
So anybody interested can show up at that.
And so then everyone could show up, because I don't think that it would make sense for the committee to be like, hey, everyone show up, and then it's gonna be a process.
Yeah, we've got a point there too.
Because I also agree with, with Guy that the cost is possibly non-existent when you look at everything together, because of the amount of money we're already spending, the amount of money we would save. I think that's why it got voted down. At a town meeting was not because it, it's a lot of money, but more because maybe it was kind of rushed a little bit and, and one or two people spoke up against it. I think we bring them in, we hash it all out, and, and then we can warn that, that meeting, a special meeting, and then everyone, hey, if the whole town wants to come, who knows?
Well, Joseph, it was more of the reasons that people voted down, because, um, because of the maintenance, because of the reliability of it, and
But I think that was a little, I think that was all misunderstood, I think that was all slightly misunderstood, but the thing is that I agree with Shelby mostly in her point that this is not the time to discuss it, we should that would be discussed at, at the, by the commission.
So, so with Shelby's idea, if everybody's, we get people, one meet on a day, or you just wanna form a committee?
Well, I mean, I guess I, I don't necessarily wanna assume though that this is something that a single one or two-hour meeting of this committee is going to figure out all of the, what they think is a good recommendation. I mean, I, I think that's unlikely to be the case, that it could be that a committee of anybody could come to an agreement on what they thought a, a smart approach would be that quickly. So I think it's potentially multiple meetings. I'll add, of course, that those would be meetings that would have to be warned and be open to the public, so people could come sit in on those meetings, because that's
I think we should simplify it, I think Gwen's got a point. I think Gwen's got a point.
Has a point about
With, with getting too many, I'm not against full disclosure, full transparency, anybody wants to come, come. But we gotta have some kind of organization to it, and I don't believe, given the situ
But that's what the committee would be, because we can't, we can't, we can't do it in secret.
We don't, I'm not saying we should.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, we don't need to do four, three, four, five meetings in order to determine for the committee to make a recommendation, we're not happy with this, we're not happy with that, we like this, we like that. I think all in all, my personal opinion, it was a, it was a great idea. I think it's just a matter of dealing with the negatives and presenting it to the public and seeing what, and once we've got the negatives straightened out with the maintenance and all the other stuff that I explained, and then go forward there. I think we can commit, commit ourselves to death, I don't think it's a bad idea to get the town in from what you said. Um, but I think that we should, if we're gonna move forward, this could like go on for months, I think, let's simplify.
Well, I, I guess, I guess what I would say is that if, and I don't think this is the case, that, but if if we already think that this can be hammered out in one meeting and decisions can be made, then I'm not quite sure I understand why we would form a committee and get other people involved. I mean, the reality is, we form a committee, I think, to get a wider range of input from people. So I do think there's value in having a number of people who haven't necessarily been part of the discussion all along, um, to get different perspectives. And what I'm saying is, that may end up taking multiple meetings for that group to come to a consensus. It may not, it may happen once, it'll take what it takes, and I don't wanna, right, I don't wanna decide ahead of time how long this is going to take.
But then, once they do, you know, whatever many, many meetings they do, then all it takes is one, well, hopefully, one select board meeting is what I'm saying. The committee might have six meetings, and then it's one select board meeting to make that decision, because we are the ones to make the decision.
Right, and I don't think anyone's saying that we're ceding control of this decision to anyone else. It's that we're getting other input from people, and, and the reality is, I mean, the alternative is that we have on our agenda and we talk about at meeting after meeting for the next however long, what we think we should do about equipment. But again, for lots of reasons, not least of which is Shelby's point, that the town, I think, made it fairly clear, and a number of people in the town expressed interest in being part of this process, and we shouldn't discourage that for many reasons.
I agree. Guy, do you wanna say anything?
Well, I'll just say this in conclusion, at the, at the town meeting, I'm just gonna be point-blank true. The, the crowd was poisoned instantaneously with a number of issues. Number one, about the maintenance of the machine. Number two, the parts, is the company gonna still be available to do that? And, um
Purchase agreement.
Uh, you know, the purchase sales agreement and depreciation. None of those facts are really prevalent in this situation. When you buy a used machine, you know well
You know, what I, I don't wanna just, I, I mean, I understand your point, but I don't think there's necessarily anything super productive about re-litigating the discussion that's happening.
I'm just expressing my opinion.
But, but the question of whether or not we commit
About what we do moving forward.
The bottom line is that we can get parts, number two, we need the machine, number three, it's a used machine, and as far as depreciation, we're gonna hold it forever, we have a greatest since 1986. There's no depreciation, we don't pay taxes, none of that is part of the game. So, and when you have some people who we deal with as a vendor, and a very good vendor, I can understand he has a vested interest in some of the things that he may say. And I, I love Archie, I think he does a great job for the town. It's, we continue to buy and, and will continue to buy from him. So I just find it difficult when you find something that, in a small town, that you know works, it's there, and it didn't cost us any money because we had money in the bank, and we're paying $39,000 a year to rent stuff. It just doesn't make sense, that's all I'm saying.
So one thing I think is important to, that I would like to note at this point, about the discussion of there potentially being a conflict of interest, um, I'll just remind everyone that as a, as a board and as a town, we've had no problem with this person being our road commissioner for many, many years. And there was never a concern about there being a conflict of interest at that moment.
But I brought it up probably not necessarily meaning a conflict of interest, I think it was not conflict of interest, just
Okay.
I just used the logic.
I've said it, I, I think we can go forward with this, but I just wanted to get it off my mind, because, uh, I, I think, I thought it was a great thing for the town, and I still think it's a great thing for the town, and the town, for years and years and years, has been toying with this, this obligation of do we buy a piece of equipment? Sunday, I got a call that a tree was down in Elmore Road. I called Mark to let him know there was a tree down. Well, what do we do? The only thing we could do is either call a vendor, we have no equipment, we have nothing to do. So I'm saying that the town needs something. You cannot, cannot function as a town without some piece of equipment.
You're missing the point, though, in a way. I agree with everything you have to say, but you're missing the point. And the point is, Archie brought up some negatives, those negatives should be addressed. I'm not talking about the depreciation, I couldn't really do more, that's ridiculous. I don't know who brought it up, this is ridiculous. But in terms of the reliability of the equipment, the quality of the equipment, whether we can get parts for the equipment, that's what Bruce is concerned about, because I don't want to hear a story that the damn thing's sitting halfway down the grass if we grow, we can get a part, a generator for it to move the damn thing, we're towing it over to the shed. We believe it, I've been there, did that, hate that.
All that late work done prior to the meeting.
And all this stuff will be settled, will be discussed by the committee and then brought to the board.
Reliability is really important, availability of parts, and that's what, that's what Archie was bringing up. So I think that has to be addressed one-on-one. We clear up those niggas, and as far as I'm concerned, I think it's a great freaking idea. I'm, Bruce has gone on board with that, I said, we'll take a nice piece of equipment. The man over there that ran it for six weeks seems to like it a lot, it does a multifaceted things. We could do some ditch digging, we could do a ton of things with it, and probably save some money after the next three or five years. So that's it, you know? I think the negatives have to be addressed, address the negatives.
Forming the committee.
That is the only question right now, is committee or no committee, the rest of this is a raw discussion for a later time.
Okay, well, whatever.
Okay, I mean, I would like to make a motion that we form a road equipment purchase advisory committee.
Beautiful words, I love that. Beautiful words, I love that.
Consisting of five members. Guy Tansar, road commissioner, Mark Bills, road supervisor, Archie Clark, assuming he is willing to serve, Doug Wellman, assuming he is willing to serve, and then I'm gonna put him out on a limb and suggest Joseph Dutton, assuming he is.
Right, because he knows about equipment, he's still a farmer.
What's that?
He knows about equipment, because he has to deal with it every day.
Well, because I guess, I'm, I'm defining that I think he might be interested in being part of these discussions, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second right here.
Second, reverse. Okay, so now discussion of it.
So then after that, we have a committee, we discuss the points, then at that point in time, once we have a consensus, great choice of word for us, after consensus, then at that point in time, we're gonna ask for a special town meeting to discuss it?
No, you don't need a town meeting.
Or we're just gonna go straight to the select board. But that's gonna violate what Shelby's saying, because it's not gonna go out to the town where everybody's gonna deal with it.
Every, every meeting goes.
Well, everybody, yeah, I mean, I think maybe I'd suggest perhaps we do a special, we make a special effort to make sure everyone knows.
We're having a special meeting.
That, that's gonna be a big topic.
It doesn't have to be a special town meeting. The select board can do, the mandate's very clear. The select board can do the purchase without notifying the town if it's less than a five-year term for the loan. Okay, so that's, that's the premise. That's what the town can, what the select board can do. If they wanna do it any, go any further than that, that's their problem.
But if we're forming a committee, and they're having a meeting, we have to, we have to comply with the open meeting.
Oh, yes, yes.
Open meeting law. Committee will have to warn me and.
Tell everybody, that's where Shelby's concerned.
Yeah, because that means that you can warn the meeting for these, for the committee, and I could be like, I have nothing to do tonight, and that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's open.
I'm gonna go to that meeting, see what they're talking about, just see if they wanna acknowledge me, I have to go and consent about some of their stuff.
That's open meeting law. That's, and I agree or argue with that.
Okay, then we can find out what the committee comes up with, and we can solve it.
And before we get off the subject, I just wanna make myself clear, especially if Archie happens to watch the state, it had nothing to do with Archie. It was because he is, you understand what I'm saying? I just wanna make sure he knows I don't. Yeah, nevermind.
You, no, you, you may.
If you was in this room, I don't think you would have blamed, I think you're.
No, no, we have a good rapport.
Um, okay, any more discussion? All right, so then all those in favor of forming the road equipment purchase advisory committee, which would be a five-person committee consisting of Guy Tanza, Mark Bills, Archie Clark, Doug Wellman, and Joseph Dutton, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any dissents? All right. Joseph, can I ask you, reach out to Doug?
Hey, uh, I'd spoken to him.
Oh, you've spoken to him, okay, okay.
Yeah, he's, he's.
He's into it.
I'll circle back to Archie and let him know. Though I know he's still interested this one. Um, okay. Next, uh.
I got two pieces of new wood.
Oh, yeah, uh, okay, yeah, correct, correct.
The first one is, I just went by Susan Panz, and not that it's a big deal, but she, I, I recommended it. They put a sign up, they already took, they already took, it pulled by the horns, they put it on the, on top of where the old Brooklyn School sign was, which looks really nice. But the main thing I wanted to talk about was the, the email I got from Olivia, and she mentioned it to me the other day, about repacking up the woodchips. The problem here is, on the, on the player, the problem here is, um, we weren't careful last year, and we were trying to comply with our insurance, not thinking that whatever we do, we'll have to do on it for night, because it kind of grown and fell on it. This was a safety issue. My wrong mark is basically a safety issue for the woodchips.
Safety issue from the insurance community.
Right, so we got it done, complied with it, moved on, and got all the other insurance issues done to satisfy the insurance company. Now she's coming back and wants us to pack more on top of it. Not a good thing. I see a situation, and I'm trying to prevent a situation where we start getting into grandfather, a lot of things that we shouldn't really be doing. Um, as far as, not came off on friendship, but as far as the water issue, we have no, that, that's our business, that's what we have to do. But this woodchip thing, um, maybe it's nominal, it's just, I have a problem with opening up a can of worms and just falling, falling into line with every little thing that she wants.
Because the town is the insured person. We have to do it.
That's always a change for me. I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't know if Mark felt this way, but when we were doing the woodchips last year, I knew we were gonna have to do it again. Maybe not next year, but, I mean, because the reality is, we're the one, I mean, if we, if we're allowing them to use equipment that is part of our property, so we have.
It has to be in a safe way.
We have the liability for that equipment.
All right, so then what we, what we do, can we get some more? Who, did you do that last time, Mark?
We did, and, uh, I believe we had some tree work, the chips were, were left from Harvey Hill. I know Thomas Bloom is, on a daily basis, does, uh, tree chipping, so he may have, uh.
Does that have to be a specific, because kids are playing in these woodchips, do you have to be careful what kind of woodchips?
I'm not sure.
Huh?
Exactly.
I mean, when we put them down, it was like six inch, uh, thick, and this is over sand. And I know that they get kicked around and settle and biodegrade.
It's basically an absorber, you know?
So perhaps, maybe there is, I, I think we put them on a little heavy when we put them down, but.
They compress.
Uh, I know that the, the tree companies that are, um, work with Green Mountain Power come through our area regularly, uh, whether it's a storm or on their routine, um, and they're always looking for places to get rid of chips, so.
Who is?
Um, Asplin Tree, they, yeah, Davy Tree, uh, they're all looking to, they get so much of it, they just need places to dump it. But like I say, Thomas Bloom is our downtown vendor, he, you know, perhaps would accommodate and dump right there.
I'll speak with Thomas, because I, I have a good chance we're gonna go get some coffee from Saturday to Riverbend, so. Um, us calling him is not a treat.
Yeah, right.
Uh, but as far as, I usually see him.
Just fine, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll warn Olivia, let Olivia know that we're on, we're fine.
Yeah, we're looking to do it.
And we're looking to do it.
Thank you for doing that.
That's no sweat. You're ready to go into old business now, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we were in new business. Okay, when we get discussing on the RFP, I have two, two things I need to talk to you about. Going to new business. No, that's old business, excuse me. I'm getting confused.
Okay, so now we're on to old business, which is, the only item is discuss and or approve the road paving RFP.
Okay, um, after contacting, I, I sent messages out to four companies, two of them responded, and the, the going rate is between seventy-five and eighty dollars a ton. And in that particular, uh, segment of the road is six tenths of a mile. And if you put three inches of blacktop, it's gonna be approximately fourteen hundred tons. If you put one and a half, it'll be seven hundred tons. The bottom line is that that road hasn't been touched probably in at least fifteen years. Archie did a base test, and he realized that there's enough base in there that we can chew up the road, do the job the right way, but it's pricey. And the bottom line is, at this point, and I think Archie would agree with it, and maybe Mark will agree with it, that maybe we should flag it, so that when we do that segment, we do it exactly the way it is, the way it should be done. If we do it now, in three years, we're gonna be right back to square one. If we do it the right way, we'll probably get ten or twelve years out of it. So that's my feeling.
I feel the same way.
You feel the same way. And Archie also mentioned that, and when they do that, uh, reclamation, which they grind up the, the stone and so forth, they can take that and all out, and that would be part of that reclamation, a thing. So we can cut two-thirds of one stone.
And building up powers.
And, by the same token, next year, we will have enough money to do the east end of, uh, Hill Road. So do it all in one shot. And I, like I say, the best application is to do the road reclamation. The thing in front of Howard Osgood's, I guess we're gonna have to watch that. If worse comes to worse, maybe we can get, um, what's it, O'Brien to put a, a bigger patch in there, just to get us through one year.
Right.
Because right now, we have a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Next year, I'm gonna suggest that the budget meetings in December, then we go from thirty thousand, maybe thirty-five thousand. And we also get thirty-nine thousand dollars from the state for state aid for the highways, which can be used for paving. It is supposed to be used for highways, so that's, that's allowable. So right now, we're at a hundred and eight at the end of June.
Couple of things. Um, I drove all the pavement today, to look at it, in anticipation of what we're gonna talk about tonight. I also read what, everything was said, including what Archie had to say. And I totally agree a hundred percent. What I'm thinking, and you've all can, what, if we paid for that, what do you call that stuff where you put, where, where you, where they come in for a day and.
Crack sealant.
Crack sealant. And I was looking after it as going up towards your house, and it really held up really well.
Oh, it does, it does.
And we have, we. And we made it by the day, correct?
Yes, it's thirty-six hundred dollars.
So I looked really closely at, at both Gracie, I didn't go, I don't know, I didn't go for your line. But I looked at Gracie for Road, I looked at Hill Road, and I'm suggesting that what we do, forget Hill Road, except in front of Marshes, except in front of your house, which meets some, fill in. This is a little off topic in a way, because it's not talking about the RFP. And, and in front of the Fontaines, where there's some cracks coming in.
That's it.
We get, get somebody in for, get them to come for a day and fill those cracks. As far as, just a minute, just far as the part that we're RFPing about, I consider. We should fill in, you, you, you mentioned one spot, but there are several holes that are starting to appear, one down there, there Cynthia's passed there, you've probably seen it, there's one further, because I drive it every day.
I, I believe for less than a thousand dollars, we can get all those patches taken care of, give us one more year. As far as the crack and seal, that's another, another project. We have two, we have two described areas. We went over it last fall, but we got snowed out, and it, we kept the same number, so we're, we're intending to do that, and if we have to add a few more, at thirty-six hundred dollars, it's a real good investment.
I look nice up here.
You know, so that'll give us at least some, uh, waiting time, because the bottom line, there's so much activity in our ground, that as soon as we pave, two years, three years later, we have cracks. And if we don't fill those cracks, we're gonna have serious problems.
But other than Lower Hill Road, and now that we've paved all of, uh, Reston Hill Road, other than the section from Sunny Lane to Gracie Brook, and all of Gracie Brook, there's only one really compromised section, that's the one that Jules have brought up to me that one day, from, from your father's farm, out past Cynthia Now's mother, uh, Courtney Now's mother's house there and there, just before you go around the bend. But we can, that, we have to talk about differently.
That's terrible, cracked up. I, I think that, um, I agree a hundred percent with, with waiting a year, and then, and then we are in pretty good shape, and we might wanna consider starting to put some money away to fix that section there, because that, as you both know better than any of us, is gonna be a nasty, very big job there.
The other, the other part of the equation is that oils are at sixty-five dollars a barrel, or right around. When we did the reclamation up at Putney Mountain, it was fifty-eight dollars a barrel. That difference in made us between eight thousand and seventeen thousand dollars for reclamation. Hopefully, again, that's pure speculation, of course, but it could be less next year, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, so for me, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we flag the, the paving for this year, and just address whatever comes up, and then do the, uh, crack and seal programs that Mark and I went through last year. And if we find a few other areas, we can get two days' work out of them, seventy-two hundred dollars.
That, that makes a lot of sense to me as well. I mean, Shelby.
I think our coffers are in good shape.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Well, when I, when I walked Gracie Brook Road during the cleanup, I was looking at the cracks to see, and I really thought it held up well. There was a couple areas where it was separating a little bit, and that was going from our house to here. I walked it, because it's been a process.
Have we not, I'm sure, that, that can work, I mean, that, you know, that's sealing stuff.
So I agree.
Um, as far as the new little potholes that are appearing, um, when we got the big one in the spring, I, I had purchased some stuff from W, where I put it in, and it lasted overnight. It was a dry mix, and so I specified that in the past, we had gotten some material that had a, like a tire to it, that, uh, almost, when you pour it out of the bag, it was loose, it almost levels itself, and it packs way better. So I got a pallet full of that, so anything that appears on Hill Road now can be.
You've got some surgery on it.
If it turns into a big project, like Guy said, we could call O'Brien to, um, address it, but these little ones, I feel like this material I have will, will maintain it for, you know, one more year, a year or a little bit quicker. And, again, I, I feel the same, that if we were to pave this summer, it's getting late, and it would be putting a band-aid on it, more or less. Um, we talked about grinding, an inch and a half grinding to me, you're not getting below the cracks.
No, you're not.
We go deep, it's gonna.
And like you said, it'll be ten or twelve years for us to talk to each other.
And, and the bottom line is, we don't get grants for that particular road segment, because it's not part of the program.
And, and I agree, there's some good material, I believe, is under the road, and, um, we can address the ice spot on the road. And again, um, you know, speed limit signs, only certain amount of people abide by speed limits, and vision of safety is number one.
It's cool.
So if we can address that issue on the all.
Yeah, right, if we can help that same town.
Yeah, we'd be for a lot less money if we're grinding, uh, here would be twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be much, that'll be significantly less.
Yeah, and we may be able to also put some material along by Howard.
Along by Howard's to build that.
Raise the road up, and not be rushed at it, and that'll keep the water out of the road, make pavement last longer. And then also, I showed Guy when we were out measuring.
Relax, relax.
Inside the corner to the access to Howard Osgood's bit, um, I would like to address that with a one to two foot extra, uh, shoulder.
Yeah, on that, because that, that can come with the reclamation.
Many times, I, I met a car and sent over, and you feel your tire drop off the pavement, and your bike needs to come back on. So if we could add two feet and then an inch grinded into the, the entrance, that would be good.
As I said, you, and you get some, either some backbone gravel or some, uh, sure packing right now, do it now, because I'm really concerned about a car catching a tire on there, and if they do, there's no place for that car to go. It's gonna be a dangerous situation.
Where is this?
Howard Osgood's gravel.
I don't know where that is.
I'll show it to you.
Okay, thanks.
So I just wanna, um, okay, so that's great, I think we're.
That's where the, the pavement would end, right there.
Yeah, right, pretty much where it ends.
That section, that's why I brought it up.
But right now, that should be done now, the, that little filling area, you know, with some material, because that's a dangerous situation.
Okay. Um, thank you, Guy and Mark, for all of the, I know there's been a, a bunch of different variations of this, and reaching out to people and coming out, and just for all the time and energy of researching stuff, and giving it thought and all that.
This is coming, yeah, very nicely.
It's, it's good, I mean, I think it's, you know, this is.
You're talking to Archie, so.
Is a Ryan of intel, that he could look, is a Ryan of intel, that he could look at the front of Suzie's to see?
All you have to do is give him a call, and he'll do an estimate for you, and he's a real positive guy, and that's his, that's his kind of thing.
I think he was a Marine now.
All right, moving on to, uh, no worries.
Don't go into old business, no, not so fast.
All right, you got three minutes.
Okay, you asked for it.
This is why you, if you're here in time, when you get to number two.
You say change your jet on it like this.
Well, I'm sorry, we don't, not here.
First of all, do you remember the drainage, the drainage issue I had in the?
Yeah.
I found out what it was, and it wasn't anything I found out. You're not gonna freaking believe this one. Okay? Okay, wait, be quiet, Quinn, Quinn knows the story. Walked in to Sunny, to Suzie's little penis, I think it's on my head, to talk to Olivia about whatever else. And I said, well, I'm just gonna take a look at the drain, see how it's doing. So the top of the room was pretty quiet, open door, how you guys know, one lady was new, the other was Jessica's been there forever. And I said, how's the drainage working? She says, it's fine, where the paintbrush is. I said, what, what are you talking, the paintbrush is. She goes, you understand, I used to work for a hardware store, and, and when I see a drain hanging on, I clear it. I says, okay, and tell me more. Evidently, when you have a downspout to a sink, it's like that. And then you hook up the P-trap to that. When I, we, meaning Dave Celestino did the backsplash, I thought maybe we got some crap into the P-trap with some of them, and I was fixing it. So I took the P-trap off to look clean, fine, not a problem. And every once in a while, the drain was working, but it wouldn't work. You know what it was? Artist brushes, that they had kept stuffing down the freaking drain, and it was going this way. So it was clogging the drain up, but it didn't clog it up all the time, it depended on the amount of usage. And the time of the day, the drain fine.
Were cleaning out their paintbrushes, they dropped down the sink, and they didn't tell anybody.
What do you mean, the, the artist brushes were down?
Yes.
Six, seven, eight of them, and I, but also, yeah, really, I never saw it, because it was a little. And I didn't go, I didn't stick my nose up there and say, what's up there, because it was draining for a long time.
All right, so Father Guido, that's my three minutes, I need some more three minutes.
Okay.
That's fantastic.
Move on. As of June first, we should have a, a level of three thousand bucks in the account. Pending, if there's any pay orders in that, but from what I see, we've only had three charges against Sunny Lane daycare this year. Two from last year, and seventy dollars for that, whatever thing it was. That's it, for five months, so there's money there, now. I've been looking into the floor, looked at everything from carpets to tiles to linoleum to everything. And I think I finally came up with the best solution, not the least expensive, but definitely the longest-term solution. No months late. Why? Because it's reasonable, easy to take care of, uh, you won't slip on it for the most part, if it's done right. It's easy to install, in terms of the height compared to all the door openings, it works for that, and it's long distance. I actually took some off my old floor of my old kitchen, after twenty-five years, and I now have it on my chimney in my living room. This stuff is easy to do, and the steps are simple. The hardest part of doing it is making the surface underneath, getting the old tiles off, and getting them off, and scour the underneath. I've talked to Perkins.
Where is this application, where are you talking about for this?
I'm talking about the entrance way. Yes. And I've talked about it with Olivia, she thought it was a great idea, because she happens to have it in her house. And I just came from the Cape, and they have it, and all their entrance ways, and all their fifty units.
So it washes well, like, or if somebody drops something heavy on it, do they break?
Yeah, of course it does. Drop anything.
Kids fall and on it, you know.
What's that?
She doesn't have any concern about kids falling and.
No, no, we talked about it. So, just quickly, the steps to do it, I was explaining that you take, the hardest part is getting the old tiles off. I have a question for you, Mark, for a minute, about the, about the wood that you cut up for me, in my house, don't want to forget that, but anyway. So once that's up, then you, you lay thin, you lay thin set, and you, you do a dry plan. Once the dry plan's down, then you're ready to thin set and lay your tiles. Before you layer tiles, Perkins straightened out on this, you seal the tiles the first time. The idea of sealing tiles is since you can get the thin set off, and you, when you got, when you're grouting and thin setting, so you don't have that. So you put the thin set down, you lay the tiles after they've been sealed, then you grab it, and then you get the grab off. And then you reseal the tiles again for a second time. End of story, done.
How were they cut?
That's, that's part of the cost. You cut them with a wet house saw.
Like we did in the, in the.
And it's there, but what would be the thirty-five dollars a day on, if we go ahead with this? I'm trying to work it out, so I only need it for one day. But once I dry lay it, and make my marks.
Yeah, Guy did that, we did.
You know.
I have one at home.
You have one?
Yeah.
A wet house saw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We use it.
Money.
No, good, it's, it, it cut twelve by twelve tiles.
Beautiful.
It's small, but it worked.
Yeah, it cost me sixty-five bucks. It was the best sixty-five bucks I ever invested.
Oh, they're great. So, cost.
And that's my fault.
Here we go, um, it's not that expensive, I don't think, well, minus the thirty-five dollars, it's under four hundred bucks.
Is this, is this something that has to be done, I mean, is there a, a problem with that area right now?
They, they had a, with, they had state inspection, and they were complaining about it. That's a start.
Because things are peeling up.
No, I just wanted, it's linoleum tiles.
If this was something cosmetic, cosmetic or something?
So how big an area, I can't.
Hundred eighty square feet. So, based on cost, you're looking at about, where is it? I'm sorry, three hundred and five dollars for the tiles, fifty-one ninety-five for the most expensive sealer that I can get, because that's, that's critical. You can get a thirty, a thirty dollar one, but this one will last way longer, by use of the mask. And then the wrap, thin sets about thirty-eight bucks, and then of course, we don't have to do the effects.
Now, the thin set, is that what you, what you mean by thin set, that's what it's sticking out of the, so that.
What you do is, I even bought a brand, you see it?
I, yeah, I watched Guy do ours.
I even bought a brand new belt sander, for a different reason, I hardly even use it, I can use it just to score the whole piece. Then you put the new thin set down, then you trial the thin set, this is after you over, you dry laid it, you got a mark, you're ready to go. Let it dry for overnight, grab it, reseal it the second time, and now back to mark. Remember all the thing with, that you made for me? Was it oco maple, do you remember?
Maple.
I had, after we're done, and it's all to the walls, I had to take off the old trim. It's just always cheap plastic, right? I could actually, that was like half inch.
Yeah, it probably dried even a little, you know.
Even let it last. Can I get a good finish out of that just by belt sanding it without plating it?
I would think so.
So I could just cut something out of my cable saw, snip that off, nice trim all the way around, I guarantee you.
So what color is it, gray or?
You're looking at this, on the right side, this is a little darker than, than, I pulled this out of the woods, this came up the floor.
So what, what color did she want, or what color?
It's, it's a multicolor thing.
Oh, okay.
There's three different colors.
All right, yeah, we got it.
A slate, and, and a reddish, this is kind of a roonish looking color.
Random.
It's random, random sizes.
So that's good.
And so I'm asking you people to let me go ahead with it. Um, if, if I can get those tiles up, I'll do it next weekend, because she's closed. She's closed, uh, next Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, so it would be, not letting your tiles, so you've, you're putting in a big problem.
Oh, yeah, you have, have running water, I don't.
How do people feel about, so, I mean, I, I'll say for myself, I'm okay with us spending four hundred-ish dollars to do this. Is that right?
And, uh.
Generally, you agree with us?
Issues?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I might even have, I might even have some, some thin, do I have any things that left? I've done some of these projects, I might have brat left, but I have a lot of great brats of that ones, and I could pick them up if necessary.
Okay.
Well, you'll have to just come by the house and check out the saw, make sure, could it have some use?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, cut it.
If you can go like this, with a saw.
Yeah.
Turn it around and do the other saw.
It'll be fun. The only thing I wanna caution you about is that when you put tile down, or slate or anything else, you gotta be careful of the foundation you're putting it on. You can't do that, okay, you have to have one or two floor of things.
Well, what you got is.
Okay, just so you know, all right.
I've seen it, you've got at least, my guess is, and I could, in that book, probably tell me. I'm guessing, when they built that addition, because it was up to school standards, it's at least three-quarter inch probably, or five-eighths inch plywood down there.
Okay.
I've done it, Russell's done a luan, on top of, what did I do at my house?
Yeah, okay, no, I just want, okay, on.
Wait, I'm gonna answer your question. On my house, when we had it for twenty-five years, I had three-quarter inch plywood, a little bit of luan, and that on top of it, and it lasted for twenty-five years. Of course, I didn't have an army coming in and adding it every day, but.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I also, one more thing, I also, again, my three minutes are up.
Yeah, do you have one more thing after this, I'm changing, I hope to know. If you want to.
I was concerned about, about the underneath, of getting the adhesive. And I answered, can I scour it and scrotting it up? And then with the thin set on, no problem, so.
That's good, yeah.
That saves me a lot of life, so. That's my spiel, anybody more?
All right. Awesome, thank you for bringing all that out there.
Okay.
Now, are you, are you getting?
Do you need help?
Maybe.
I think I'll be around that, that weekend.
Okay, thanks. Uh, the part of needing help would be, I'd like to load the truck up with the tiles and stuff like that, and. Um, I'm probably gonna go fetch it on Wednesday, Thursday next week and get it all. I'll put it under my interest free card, and put it in the book line down and get paid from some of our damn road.
Although you're getting it, you're gonna get it from Perkins?
Yeah.
Do we have an account at Perkins?
No.
We don't have one.
I only do a W W.
Yeah, I think they have them mostly.
So then just do that.
I noticed the town has a credit card.
Yeah, we do.
That we use for purposes, I've never used it personally.
Yeah, I have a credit card.
You do? Okay. No.
When you seal with a saw, you should seal this credit card too.
I like that.
Authorizer.
Only I can sign for it.
Okay.
Is that true?
Yes.
They know me over this, I can forge a name.
Bruce, remind me to tell you about the tile story.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, let's move on, okay.
All right, let's move along.
All right.
That's it after.
Moving on to summaries updates, Mr. Tanza, town clerk wise.
Um, everything's, you know, we've been very busy, there's another school vote coming up, June eleventh. And, uh, obviously, I'm gonna need counters, the same thing, it's gonna be a two-question ballot, it's on the webpage right now as a sample. The warning is also on the, uh, the webpage, so any information you want is right there on the webpage. All you have to do is look for it, and it's there, so that's June eleventh. Um, the dogs, we're gonna submit a, a list to Doc when she comes back, and then she can chase the seven or eight dogs. And taxis is over, next thing we go toward delinquent taxes, and hopefully, we can clear up some of those, uh, problems. Well, I'd like to have four years in a row with no delinquencies, I'll try, but who knows?
That's freaking amazing, Guy.
Well, no, well, it's amazing, this is.
Nineteen seventy-eight, and I remember those booklets every year, with a list of people's names, and then it got to be so bad, they said, oh, maybe we should go and end the booklets, I know, we never even dreamed of this.
But that's, all right, the people have begun to realize they have an obligation, a responsibility to their town, because without their taxes, we cannot get things done. And I make them understand that responsibility and obligation in a way that they respond. So that's good. The other thing is, um. There's a, uh, there was some legislation passed in regards to the schools. They are now gonna ask for mandatory lead testing in water. So that's another thing that's coming up, it's obviously mandated, it's not funded, so it's coming up, so that's something to look forward to. July first starts a new notary law, and also July first starts a new vital statistics law. All those are in a hapa, uh, there's no more recording here in the office, they're done statewide. The, um, funeral parlor or the cremation service sends the information to the state. Uh, that's where you get your certified copies, it's still in the works, I'll have more about that when I'm going to training, May twenty-second.
Look, look out the window.
So.
That's more.
So.
Deer.
What, are there deer?
Yeah, quite a few here.
Oh, yeah.
Four?
Three of them.
Three? Four.
Sorry.
That's a German shit.
Four?
German.
Oh, yeah, there was four.
Sorry, but it was so cool.
That's okay.
Sorry. We got to specify.
Yeah, oh, deer would be talking.
Wrong time.
So, basically, that's it, and, and yet, and, and in conclusion, I get a little frustrated with the, uh, road commissioner position, because there's not much I can do, because I have nothing to work with, so I, I'm gonna reinforce that idea in your minds from time to time, because for people to do things, they have to have tools, and if we don't have tools, we can't get the job done, it's real simple. So I'll just say that from time to time. Other than that, things are going good, um, you guys are doing a great job, I think the town appreciates it. Green Up Day was very successful, you guys did a hell of a job, um, and that's all I can say, I mean, you know, it is getting better.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I'm done, it must be, oh, three seconds, I'm wrong.
We better be positive.
Should we consider, Dave's gonna love this, should we consider a second Green Up Day in the fall? Because of the amount?
Yeah, well, you know, what we've talked about before, and we talked about it last year, and I forgot about it. Mark and I have talked about, not so much doing a second Green Up Day exactly, but in the fall, before it snows at least, making an effort to hit the Ellenware dumping sites and the Pugnion Road dumping sites, to, to try to get some of that stuff picked up before winter. Which is probably still something we should consider doing, because it would make.
I'm gonna call.
Would make the spring better, but.
Uh, I'm gonna call Nick Mercedes, Frank Mercedes, and find out, see if we can get something done in regards to the, the material that's dumped on his property. It's out of the town right away, so technically, we don't really, we shouldn't be picking it up, but it's an eyesore. And I'll see if I can work something out, I have a good rapport with them, and see, maybe they may be able to do something. Uh, because that's, it's just an ongoing thing, people I have there, they, you know.
I mean, at a certain point, and I know that they've posted it now, that they don't want, I mean, at a certain point, they need to put up some kind of barriers there to keep people from.
I agree.
I mean, we've talked about it while we were out there, I mean, people just back in and dump all of their stuff, or go back up in there and dump.
Well, maybe a couple of garbage barriers, as obvious as they are.
Something.
I came through different.
Then there's another, right, exactly.
I came through there on Monday night, and again, tonight, and people who've been up in there were, they dumped garbage.
Where's this?
To the shooting zone, and, um. I wrote down a number of people.
But isn't that thousands?
Was full of garbage cans.
Not for that.
So when I was walking tonight, I stopped and looked over the bank to see if they had dumped their cans, and there was nothing new there. There was some new trash out at the town line.
Yeah.
Just, they, they were already in left-of-year boxes and all that stuff, but, um, I did find another carcass over the bank.
Oh, yeah.
Carcass?
Animal carcass.
Yeah, I got that. Where's the shooting range?
Well, I.
It's not, it doesn't exist. Halfway through, there's a place.
Yeah, there's a big sort of opening.
You're not talking about at the bottom of the hill pass recovery that Nelson put in, down there?
Talking where the railroad used to cross the West River.
Yes, down in there.
On the right-hand side.
Ah, okay.
It used to be a more active shooting area than it is now.
It's pretty good.
Now it's very.
It's a more active river there.
But it's still big trash down there.
It's mostly, but it's not legal, they keep the ones out.
Yeah, right, there's, yeah.
I just had one last comment that I forgot. Uh, going forward with the, the salt shed.
Thirty seconds.
Bell Engineering is in the process of filing a pay board with the state and so forth, that's moving forward. Saying that, I wanna also, I would like the town to consider putting a cell phone amplifier at the town yard site. We have a number of people who work there, we have a number of people who can get hurt there, and we have no signal or very little signal. With an amplifier, we could get signal there. So I think it's an important thing, especially now that they're gonna have some people doing construction, that we have a way that people, that we have a way that people, God forbid, if something goes wrong, they can contact. It's not terribly expensive. I think, Diddy said it was a hundred bucks or something. She has one in each bus and everything else. It amplifies the signal so that we could have cell service. I get really concerned with Mark working by himself. He's got heavy tools, heavy things going on. God forbid something ever went wrong, it would be a couple of days before we knew about it. So no, and it's serious.
Yeah.
I'm not even gonna go with the insurance community, that's a good. But the bottom line is, I'd like to have an amplifier of some sort installed there so that Mark can talk to people, meet people, make arrangements, without having to go into new things to make a phone call or come into the office.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds like a good idea to me.
It's good. You know, I don't know if it has to be voted, because it's part of our budget. We have money in there. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what my idea was.
I think everyone.
Yeah.
I think we're all, we're all in favor of that. That's very sensible.
For sure.
And then I ordered my new pickup truck tomorrow.
You didn't give me your car yet.
To go with your other new car. Mark, what's going on road wise?
Basically, I'm just still bringing the last few roads up to summer code, you know, putting grounds in and cleaning up the ditches, making sure the culverts are all in working order. And just general maintenance, straightening up signs and culvert markers, something like that. So it's all general.
You guys were talking earlier about the, one of the downed trees on Ellenware, that one that you and I were looking at that day.
Right.
That had, so have we taken that, is that down now, or is that still there?
But I'm making plans to have a second person with me. And probably we'll hook chains up and drag it.
Drag it so it'll fall, yeah.
So just, we'll have to stop traffic and block the road. So that'll take place here probably this.
Okay.
I don't know if it'll happen before the weekend, but if not, right.
We have five days of rain coming.
Yeah.
Oh, nice. So sorry. Sorry you weren't talking.
No, that's, we had a call for another tree, but I'm thinking it might have been a power company issue, and it was taken care of before I came on the scene, so. The other thing was, you know, back to Green Up Day, I think we were somewhat successful cleaning up the road sites, and we did get a fair number of people to help. Couple of young kids actually showed up.
That was nice.
So on Monday, we ended up, Archie Clark, who always donates his truck for the rubbish removal, which I drive to the Wyndham Solid Waste and put everything in its containers, and our bill came to $222.30. We had thirty tires.
Yeah.
Torbine, had rims, which was a little.
Thirty tires?
Yeah. It was a ridiculous number of tires.
Holy smokes!
Carrie and Barbara Born brought back ten tires just out of Athens Road, probably. And then everywhere, whenever you found.
I don't know who your buddy was there.
The women came back. They found four or six tires up there. Yeah, there were lots of tires.
Yeah, more than other years.
Yeah, a rare number of tires.
We also had two twin mattresses, two sets of box springs, sofas. We had sofa recliner.
Barbecue pit.
A barbecue pit? That amazed me when you got that in there.
What you need is a shed. You can open up business. Yeah, bring a car and put the tires on it. You can go.
There's more that we could have gotten, but we got the obvious that was, you know, in the town right away.
Yeah, an awful lot of them.
So I know it starts over the next day, but I think it was a successful.
Yeah, no, it definitely was. And as always, you and Shane, who came with you.
Yeah, you guys.
Such a huge help to have him, and that was great of him to be willing to do that for most of this Saturday. That was super helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And, you know, just continuing to general maintenance of the upkeep.
I suppose Mr. Shane was the last name. C Y R.
All right. So thank you for all that.
Yeah.
A former passenger on my bus. He's a large fellow.
Football player, you know.
He's a big, he's a big guy, which came in very handy. He was carrying this at one point, when we were out on Ellenware and you noticed that, well, the sofa, but then also that old TV.
Oh, yes.
And he, like, carried this thing up in a really awkward way. That seemed like he was really gonna hurt himself, but he didn't, I guess. Okay, moving on to communications. A couple of email things that came through. One is that there's, speaking of Wyndham Solid Waste and what our four-ish thousand dollars a year goes for. There's a household hazardous waste event, June 1st, from 8:00 AM to noon. And that will be in Townsend, at their, at the Highway Garage in Townsend, which is the first one that's been there in a little while, so it's the closest one for us by far.
And it's what, five dollars, right?
Yeah, five dollars, and there's a limit of 10 gallons of hazardous waste per household.
Location in town?
Townsend Garage, Highway Garage.
It's on Route 35.
On, yeah. And then our animal control officer, who's currently in sunny South Carolina.
Is that where she is?
Uh, yeah. She said she's coming back the end of the week, I think. But she wanted to just note a couple of animal control things that have come up in the last couple of weeks. That there's a, she spoke to a resident on Harris Hill that there's a lab-type dog that's left wandering on its own up in the neighborhood. They still haven't, she still hasn't figured out who owns the dog or which house the dog belongs to, but she's hoping to be able to track it down the next time the dog is seen. The person who reported it thinks that a renter perhaps owns the dog, and it's unclear if the dog's licensed, but Dot is looking into it. And then she also just got a call about a coyote being hit by a car on Hill Road. The animal did die. And she had the resident reach out to David Tattle.
Who was this guy?
Who lives in Townsend, who I guess is the, one of the game wardens.
I was a Hill Road.
I think this was just within the last few days, I believe.
Yeah, it is.
I guess the person reached out to her and Nancy Libby on Facebook about it. But in any event, she's put the person in contact with the game warden.
Yeah.
And that's it for emails. The only paper correspondence is more glossy stuff from BLCT.
I wanna see that.
And then you pass the.
Oh, BLCT.
Pass the.
Yeah, they overdid it.
Sort of, or warrants.
They slowed our whole emails to there.
Yeah.
We got a couple of buildings going in the state. I see some kind of a building over on Hill Road. Past you, beautiful, just a pass.
Or the house that has all the stuff in the yard that you guys found must have been all their brothers and sisters down the hill. We don't dump it, we just keep it in the yard for that.
What was that?
Our yard's rough, I was gonna say. When you guys were talking about all the stuff down the hill, I'm like, oh, it sounds like everything in our yard. But you didn't clean up our yard while we were gone, because I came back and it was all still there.
And then we got the.
So we should start taking photographs of what's in her yard and compare it.
Now we have something I slowly but surely bag it up, and like poor Franklin and his sons just takes it.
Yeah.
And Sally Fagley, that's Sally Fagley, that, what are they doing with that building in there?
That building is a garage. That's not Sally Fagley's, that's the.
No, I know Sally.
The pottery place, it's a garage and an apartment upstairs.
Yeah, okay.
And the listers will be visiting.
And then the fence is Fagley's, right?
Yeah, the Fagleys are putting up the fence.
I don't know if the Fagleys are, or the, I don't know about that.
They face it away from them if they were putting it up.
But that's how you put a fence, yeah.
How would you like to be living next to that?
That's the curviest way to build a fence. You put the finished side on your neighbor.
Yeah, or on the road or.
Whatever, yeah. The fence is a very. Yeah. Fence isn't a very current thing. It's kind of a suburb thing, so.
It is, yeah. Well, I originally assumed it was maybe part of the same project, but, yeah. Like Shelby says, the way it's oriented, it looks like it must be the Fagleys putting it up.
Because they took down trees, I think, when they did the garage, but I feel like the Fagleys are like, we need our.
Well, there was a little.
Their visibility.
Board of Contingent.
Yeah, I know, yeah. They're working it out.
Yeah, they are, sorry.
Yep.
Is there a new house going up on Hill Road?
Four thousand dollars in average.
But where, on Hill Road? I don't know if that new house, which one are you talking about?
I think it's the Robinson family.
So while that, while we're signing those agenda for next time, we'll talk about the water system again, to see what we make.
Well, this is a deal. We're moving on.
Put on the EMP compliance thing, just to see if we've gotten any response from the supervisory union, other.
Meeting House. I'm hoping you have a quote from Servpro that came to see the building yesterday about backwatering, so maybe we discuss that for a minute.
Remediation.
He hasn't contacted me quite yet, but.
Yeah, I think, I'm, because I spoke with you offline about this, but I think that what you're doing is awesome. Have you spoken to anyone from the meeting house committee? Just since I know, like, Carrie and Dan, they might wanna be, like, keyed into it offline.
Okay, I'll zip them. Oh, no.
Some of those famous emails.
Things I know. Killing me four hours a day, average.
It's my calendar.
Healthy, obligated, raises cortisol levels. Don't get me started.
All right, I would make a motion that we accept accounts payable warrant 2019-44 dated May 15 in the amount of $8,503.94. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any discussion? I assume you're not. Okay, all those in favor of accepting accounts payable warrant 2019-44 dated May 15 in the amount of $8,503.94, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Mark, how many spots would you have?
And then, hang on a second.
Okay, please.
And then I move that we accept payroll warrants 2019-45 dated May 15 in the amount of $2,241.65. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Shelby. Any discussion? No. All those in favor of accepting payroll warrant 2019-45 dated May 15 in the amount of $2,241.65, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Sorry, Bruce.
That's what I was, so many times I don't remember.
Sorry.
You said, how many places? Is that your question? Well, we did the place where the old swings that used to be, but I don't know if we can afford that again.
No, it's in the back, back below, no. Down below?
Yeah.
Where it's closed off? Or are you talking up top on the grass?
Remember the tree came down and.
Yes, there.
See, we took that down.
Right.
And then we covered that with chips.
Oh, we did, yeah, that's right.
So, but I don't think that we'll have to do that again.
No, I don't think so.
So basically, it was a tether ball.
The tether ball, the swings.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if they want someone on a sandbox. It's sandbox, you know, more sand.
If you guys are okay with it, I'll coordinate and find out what Olivia wants. Get Thomas to do it. Get a price first. And if it's not exorbitant, go ahead with it, yes?
Well, I think on the wood chips, we probably don't need a price, because every tree company is looking for a place to dump. We can definitely find a tree company that will dump it for free. No, I'm just saying, I don't think, I don't think it will cost anything, is what I'm saying. Because they want a place to dump.
Gotcha. But I gotta ask somebody in town to do it, and she wants to dump.
Well, so, I mean, I guess the, I guess it's two questions it's getting, right? Because if.
I loved it.
Do we, do we have any way of really getting a hold of any of the real, the bigger tree companies who come through? We don't know when they're gonna come.
We have to meet with Tom Bloom in regards to a driveway access permit. I gave him the cell number for Thomas, and he does a lot of tree work, and he's always got, it seems like, a lot of chips, so.
And maybe with him being a resident, you know, maybe he'll.
See if he's willing to just give us, yeah, I mean, we could spread him if he could just drop something.
Gary donated his.
Right, and I'm sure Gary would be willing to do that again, and do like we did last time.
As she tried to go to the bash of the school, there's a sharp corner that goes down to the back door. I believe Tina's husband, Randy, had chips dumped there at one point.
Yeah.
So that's like. He was catching out of the way. Otherwise, it was gonna be done immediately, dumped on May 15th, and we'd sweep.
So I would, I would ask Sam Born and Thomas Bloom, so we don't get anybody, you know, upside down, and ask them if they have any extra wood chips that we could maybe have a place designated for.
Do you see them?
Yeah, I'm not sure how many chips are we looking at.
Just for that spot. I just looked at it, coming to, coming to the meeting, and it was flying to me. So I guess, she's looking for coating on top of it. I mean, she doesn't want it five feet deep, you know? But, you know, if we have extra, we can leave it in the back. We don't have a meeting next week.
That's a small fix. That's a really small fix.
Yeah.
Pile up fast.
Yeah.
Right.
So, Mark, you see them?
I see the supervisors pick up around a lot, and I could.
What supervisor?
Snack on it.
Aspen Tree Guy. He's like the foreman who goes out. I could stop him and say, hey, if you got anything close by.
Can you let me know?
I think that might be the thing to do, if you can.
Yeah, I'm afraid.
Because I, yeah, because I'm not, I'm not really sure that either Tom or Sam are necessarily gonna wanna give them away. Because I don't know that they have the volume that those, and they, they have places where they store them. So it's different than where it's Aspen, Esso Hall.
Oh, yeah, they use them for composites.
If you give me the opportunity to check into this, you know, this way, give me a week.
Yeah.
I'll tell Olivia that you're okay to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
So I added something about the back remediation of the meeting house. Anything else people can think of at the moment, agenda-wise, for the next meeting, which will be June 5th?
Three weeks. I think maybe just throw something on there about the equipment supervisor purchase thing. And it might just be like a two-minute update, so.
Yeah, people still wanna do it now that it's for real.
Yeah.
Right. All right.
And see if we get something done with that water at the school. Find out what we need to do to be in compliance.
Yeah, yeah, I have that on, sure.
Don't spend any more money on that.
Hey, it's a pain in the ass, we're caring, right?
Okay, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
We're early.
I make a motion.
Maybe we could spoil ourselves this one. Is there a second?
Is that a new call?
Okay, all those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you say have a minute?
And we are adjourned, and I'm gonna call at 8:19.